Okay, thank you for coming on the walls since it's time out in the morning. I'd call the meeting of the local town council of the Hoover, please stand for the invitation, remain standing for the purpose of allegiance, for your movement and your faith, am I right? Our God, we thank you with this day, we thank you that you've blessed us with strength and hail from the opportunity to serve our community, and we ask those things that we say and do tonight with pleasing and keeping in your will in our lives, in Jesus' name.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're in a special meeting tonight, beginning with what it would be, and we may touch on that, I say good here, just don't get it, we may touch on it, but we're not yet, we do not yet have a lot of money estimates in from the state, so we may have to do something else on that. But a number of things have transpired and resolutions, we have to do those, we call it the grants and things like that, so we have two parts tonight, we have, we want to quickly take care of some business, we're going to do the recess, and we're going to do interviews for the clerk positions, and then we'll come back and close the meeting at the end of that, is that acceptable, everybody? If not, I'd accept a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion, and second in discussion on the motion. How you vote, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And Sheriff Shears. Okay, man.
In your packet, and the contracts are here, if anyone wants to see the contracts on the roads, they're available for in the office, they were just 22 pages apiece, so I didn't print all of those 22 pages out of reality. But Resolution 2023, and Jonathan has went over these, and Jeff has looked at them, they're okay, just for us to go forward with. A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Wausau, Florida, authorizing the clerk, or the mayor to execute and enter into the small county outreach program agreement for Jefferson Street Improvements Project. This project is for the paving of Jefferson Street from Sixth Avenue to the Possum House through there.
That's the whole, that's the whole town, source behind the Supermarche.
We got to start counting Sixth Avenue and come all the way through town for that project.
That's good, that'd be a, that'd be a good thing for that site, well, both of them are going to be good, so you want to address one at a time?
Yes, of course, yeah, stay with them all back in contact.
Okay, all right, push your pleasure on the first resolution, this is the paving of Jefferson Street from Sixth Avenue all the way through, did we get any approval on whether or not we could take that into Fourth Avenue or?
We haven't got that yet, I think actually that's, I am, I'm a positive that's been planned through there, but I'm not sure that, I don't believe about that, I'm not sure.
Okay, would you please check? I know that...
Is that where it goes down the hill pretty bad?
Yes.
I remember riding up a cliff last year, I was just looking on the map right here, just depends on that agreement, if we can build it with money, because we didn't put it in the original grant, I don't think, and with the rising construction cost material, and two, when they're coming off, that's Pioneer Road, correct?
No.
Four.
Five, six.
Were they coming up so high, I mean, we'll try, I mean, I know what you want, and my goal is to give you what you want, but if it can't do it, I will bring that back once we start designing it, and present what we're doing.
That's good, I just want to make sure, I just want to make sure it hasn't quit being considered or being talked about.
No, no, I still remember that, that it goes down, and that's the end goal, I'm with you.
Yeah, okay, plus the pleasure on the board on for the first resolution.
I'll make a motion to accept that, three or four.
We have a motion to accept the resolution, contract for the Jefferson Street project is our second.
Our second.
We have a motion, and second in discussion on the motion. How you vote, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And Sheriff Shears?
Okay, we have the resolution and the contract to, for Jackson Street, which is behind the Town Hall here, it goes from Fourth Avenue to Pioneer Road, and supposed to first to Glen after Pioneer, and that is Resolution Number 2023-005, a resolution of the Town of Wausau, the Town Council of the Town of Wausau, Florida, authorizing the clerk or mayor to execute and enter into the small county outreach program agreement for Jackson Street Improvements Project.
Did you say the end to Pioneer?
It ends, yeah, it ends at Pioneer, because Jackson Street ends Pioneer, we can cross the road, that's, that avenue.
It does end at Pioneer.
Yeah, it ends at Pioneer, because that...
Now, that road y'all just opened up for Jasper, just closed for Jasper, this is Jackson.
Jackson Street, yeah, yeah, but this one ends at Pioneer, because that had already been...
Oh, this right here ends at Pioneer.
Is at Pioneer, yes.
The road actually does not end at Pioneer, it goes up, it goes up down there to Glen.
It looks like there's another block that goes up back to Highway, Highway 77, and that's Glen Avenue, but the contract with D and T that they sent to us is from Pioneer back to Fourth.
Okay.
So, if there's money in the budget, I can make an argument to do that, but I think with the force trying to do that, and they can fill up anything that's left, so probably...
Yeah, if there's money, that argument needs to be made strongly, because you got that much pavement after you cross Pioneer, it's kind of like some of these jobs that you can't just, you just kind of, two cars can't beat on that. We thought we were doing good, and we probably did do good compared to what we're saying when we put that one lane back on, but I think that we come out behind your house, we need, we need to do that one like you did the other one, if there's any money, please, please make the argument for us, is that what we want to do, that's what I want to do, that's what the council...
What I want to do.
Yeah.
But you also got to remember, once you cross Fourth Avenue, we got her Jackson Street there.
Goes on down in the swamp.
It does, Mr. Hendricks, how, we put mail basketball on, and we don't afford Fifth Avenue.
We do, and I think the difference is, we're protecting an asset that's already in place here.
Yeah, it's already there, I understand.
This has never been, this has never been upgraded, I would take it just as one out of ways I did this way, if the money was there, I'm not making the distinction between who the residents may be, but this is already an asset that's in place.
And I just want to reiterate, I'm not trying to play devil's advocate here too much, but, you know, the rising construction and the rising material, it just, it is what it is, it's nothing I can control, I wish I could, or I'd make, pave everything, but we can't. But we will, we will take into consideration, and we'll go as far, and I'll work with Margaret, I guess, at her replacement in the near future, which, we'll, we'll keep in touch, and when we start designing, I'll present, and we'll make sure y'all are well aware of what's going on.
Okay, the council, I'm just saying, now, before we're fixing the vote on, goes from the end of the pavement here, at Fourth Avenue, and at the Pioneer Road, that was the pleasure of council in this resolution.
I'll make a motion, please, accept it, go ahead.
We have a, we have a motion to accept the contract on Jackson Street, is there a second? We have a motion, and second in discussion on the motion. How you vote, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Moore, yes, try to word it.
Yes.
Yes, and Sheriff Shears.
Is this going to be a two-lane highway, is it lined down the middle, for two capacity same time?
I hope that that's, that's something we need to go up to town, for sure.
I didn't hear what you said, can you repeat that, if you don't mind, Mr. Man?
Is this going to be a two-lane highway?
It will be, it'll be, it'll be two-lane road.
Okay.
And most likely, it'll be in the city limits, unless there's any, you know, heartache, it'll be a double yellow down the middle, or a solid yellow, something where it doesn't present passing.
Yellow.
It's city limits, it's key to, and it's, just, it doesn't make sense to put anybody passing, you know, in the city limit.
Especially on this, when anybody gets passed, it never passes.
And I worked that one, and even the other one, I just don't see the need, and it's not like it's 10 miles, it's literally a half a mile road, you can't wait, it's most of the time, a little on the street, and we intend to do murder.
Okay, man.
Mr. Smith has asked me to take it off the agenda, y'all asked me to add the maintenance department to the agenda, you have in your packet a letter from one of our residents, and, you know, this, I'm not defending either or doubting either one off, but this, this is an ongoing issue, it's before your application, so...
Okay, I, I, did I misunderstand you, should we have a letter from a resident? All I have is a letter from Tim.
That's not from Tim, that's from Roger.
You sure?
Is that from Tim or here?
That's why I got it from Tim.
Oh, Tim, okay, I was, I was under the wrong impression.
Yeah, that's from Tim.
Yeah, that's from Tim, okay.
Okay. Go ahead.
And I, Roger was here when I was on the phone with Ms. Hendricks, she is very upset, and I invited her to be here tonight, but the problem is, you know, we may have went over our 50 feet off the right of way, I don't know that, I cannot tell you that I want out there, we may have not handled it in our best interest, if you know, with the language to our residents, like, again, I was my out there, but Ms. Hendricks, you know, she, she is upset, and Tim wanted his side, I guess, in the meeting.
Mrs. Hendricks was very, very angry that day, I did not hear all the conversation of former talk to her, we could hear her leaving over loudly, she put on speaker for a couple minutes, and I had, actually, I had to leave, I had some signs and checks, I believe, or something like that, but later Morgan said that this has been probably an ongoing thing with hiring a maintenance person and this resident, the resident side of the story is that, and possibly Morgan, I got, drew this conclusion from our conversation, that, that probably there was certainly unnecessary language used by both parties.
Yes.
And this is what Tim says, that's what Mrs. Hendricks said, oh, there's no letter that says that, but the thing is, they were in a cussing match, and Tim, Tim wrote it down, my, my take on this is that Tim came through that, he can leave, he can come back, he can come back here.
What?
If we're going to leave the meter, or do something, we can get Jared to go help with him, whatever, but we can't have an employee in the office, or on the ground, my opinion, I'm speaking my opinion, please, I'm saying, we can't have an employee on the ground or in the office, it's rude and literature, and like that, when you work with a good, there's a certain amount of, now, now, I don't think he has to be cursed at, sworn and cursed at, or whatever the programmer is, I don't think anybody employees have to take that in, there is a certain amount of, let somebody get it out of their system for about three minutes, and then you can usually deal with it, and, and, we have probably more officers in this field, but I'm very disappointed in his response, now then, the 50 feet, if that, if that meter is on or near the right of way, he should not have been in her yard, if it doesn't matter if she weighed him in, didn't weigh him in, he should have had some power of egress, or ingress, and should have had something documented, that he was on there for more reason, most of our meters are read from the road.
Right, this is, this is her sister's meter that is missing up, and has to be replaced, and it had to be hand read, to get them reading for her...
Mine's, mine's, it has to be read.
Yeah, we're going to replace the meter, and I told Ms. Hendricks that Tim would be the one replacing the meter, but we would have somebody out there with him, who would go out there, but, you know, where we're going to satisfy even one of them, I don't know, you know, because I've been here 27 years, and been talked pretty bad to, you know, this office, Roger, Charles, two of them, because if he does happen to come in, that phone goes on speaker, or that person is in there, but, you know, like I say, it's best, you know, we're not supposed to go back with them with the language that way, we take it, and we say yes, no, 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 and then we get out of the situation with their opinion.
He could have took it, went back to his truck, goes off, and come back, got somebody, got Marcia to go out there and read it or something.
That's right.
Or Morgan, he didn't have to stand there, he gathered it.
But, but, that's, that's my, I mean, it sounded like he was verbally attacked at first, perhaps, maybe she instigated, and all that, the problem is that he had an option.
That meter is really in 15 feet of the road, over on Finch Circle, it's, it's right there on the road, it's clearly marked, because when you come around that curve, it's been wiped out several times, the vehicle's taken that curve off there, so it's right on, around the road, by the reason he was in the yard, I don't know.
Are the meters on the driveway?
No.
The meters?
All meters are on the right of way, they're not necessarily on the driveway.
They're not into person's yard?
No.
They're just on the drive.
Can we move back a little?
No, no, that's right.
No more?
No, that involves a whole new set of moving maintenance, we're not going to do that.
And out there, like so many of our little roads, where it is the right of way, it's one of our county attorneys many years ago said it's from back to the, back to the shoulder, the back to shoulder is what you maintain, so is there a question of what right of way they could be there? My concern is, with that, or else, we can work out something, we can get a standing form of some kind, to give us an ingress privilege.
We have a right of entry.
Right of entry, whatever it's called.
We have one of those.
And we could, we could, could we, could we put it on that, off that right of way and then hit your, might could, then the commission could get it, but our water lines are not able to enter private property, I don't think.
No, that, it used to be, before we had the system redesigned, we had to move it out.
Yeah.
And one other thing, while we're on maintenance, we had some problems with the prison this week, Tim says he called in, prison says he did not, and Roger has given a check, because Tim was our impression, they were going to pull his card, but they have not pulled his card, I talked with Sergeant Cooper today, and the card has not been pulled, so he can't get inmates.
He just did.
And...
Yes, he said he did not want to get inmates.
If you, well, here's where, someone would resist before I do, okay, here are the ends where I think you want to, if you get into what he says, she said, about his inmates, the voice, Greenhead's going to win, that's going to be, that's going to be what the official referee is to come down, he didn't call in.
For a whole day.
If he does, he needed to, he needs to identify who he talked to, and some things like that, the other thing, if we're going to do inmates, we need him personally, and we kick this around in our, a couple weeks ago, if we're going to do that, it's not their option, we'll not take them again, we need to set up something with the prison, so they know, where they know we're going to give them two days a week, three, four days a week, whatever, they, they will work with us, I'm sure, but just not to show up, and not to lift somebody up, and, and it's the same thing when he's here, or when there was two of them, it's the same thing, with two now, it's just one, and we're replacing, we don't want to be the two again, but the clerk, Morgan, or successor, and the assistant for, needs to know where these people are all the time, for their own safety, and if they're working inmates, for, certainly for safety and things like that, but they're just out there, and they're working with a bat coat, or chainsaw, or piece of equipment like that, we need to know, they need to call in when they move from place to place, from job to job, or as small as our town is, if I'm working at George Rogers Park, and I'm thinking we move it to the Possum Palace, or down to Fourth Avenue, I can stop right by here, come in just me, and get drink and order, and everything overnight, and I fix the move.
I can pick up any time between the park and Possum Palace, it's a car.
Pick up that phone and call, so...
It's a matter of whether you want to.
Now, how do we address this, our situation is this, by our action and by our, by our example, the clerk has been the day-to-day supervisor, that's going to change shortly, but from now until the end of September, and then after that, we need to make sure that we agree that the court is going to have the authority to do a number of things, including ripremands, iDo, or whatever like that, or we're going to have, when we have one of these quarterly meetings, we're going to need to, as the council, address these things, see everything that we agree, we always agree, it's one of the other parties absent.
And I invited him here tonight, but his date is important.
Yeah, and that's what I do, so...
And I have talked to him about his actions, and not, not letting us know where he was at, because at Lox, we had no idea that he had not, he had left town.
Was it Vanmore, Marion, or...
Vanmore City, I know, but we didn't know he left town, you know?
That's it, if he worked for either one of those...
He probably, what he worked at, he probably... Did you do the Life 360 on the phone?
He has not gave us the opportunity to do that, he has not given us his phone for us to do that.
And what are you going to do, one more, just take?
We ask him.
Don't ask him, just ask.
No, ask him, no, it's not a...
That's not his phone to ask.
Send his pocket, I'm not going to go in his pocket and get it.
No.
Just tell him, tell him to go back to the house that day, without...
I can do that.
I agree with you.
Well, I think that's one opinion.
Now, that's the phone that we pay for?
We pay for it.
Mm-hmm.
Marcia, you want to say?
The Life 360, I've tried to look it up, where you can do it online, but it requires you to use cell phones, and I would have to put on my phone and his phone, we have to all do it together, so I just wanted to...
So Marcia, if she, if we're going to do this, she's going to get a city paying for a cell phone, but it is, we don't have any rights to put it on her personal cell phone.
No, no, that's right, it should be, it should be a city phone, and what, we talked about the truth as well, let's not have some, if we don't truth...
We put GPS on the truck, that would probably be the best...
Did we not, did we not vote that at the last meeting?
You voted on the 360, you didn't vote on the GPS.
No, we did vote on GPS.
With the, with the GPS?
No, just 360.
Okay, do we want to?
We can put that through our fleet, few other carts, you know, we can put that on.
And, and the reason, again, some of this, our employees sometimes don't understand, but somebody, we don't need somebody coming to this meeting sometime, and they're going to say that they saw our employee on our true, informal offer, and, and in my history, I know that that's happened, and things like that, that GPS will tell us where the other people are, I think we'll have it.
How much is it going to cost for the GPS?
I would have to find that out.
Because Life 360, it costs everything.
Yeah, and we don't have to do it tonight, because cost is something we need to consider, and we'll meet again in a couple of weeks, but tonight, I'd prefer to do it then, and we'll come back to it for a long meeting, then, but...
Let me get you some...
In the immediate, how do we address this particular confrontation, have you heard from Mrs. Hendricks since this day?
No, I have not.
Does this happen every month, when Tim goes out there?
Some form of this happens every month with Ms. Hendricks.
So we have a record, I mean, we don't have a record, written record, but we have...
We have recorders.
We have a history.
We have recorders that we go out there and put a 24-hour notice on her meter most months, and she says, well, she didn't get the notice, because she's got cameras everywhere, want no notice put on her, now, Tim, Tim is now taking pictures when he puts that notice out, and so we have those, you know, because we did put a notice out, because she's paid the $25 reconnect fee several times, you know?
I think we should come to a meeting, and us, I'll address him about what is expected and what is not going to be tolerated, as far as, you know, arguing with people, or cussing them, or, you know, whatever.
And for the most part, we ought, we ought to want to defend our employees, any of our employees, and if they're wrong, we need to, we need to address it, for the most part, most of us have been in the workforce, and have many employees hurt themselves in the last, and maybe have had to answer against charges, false or not, we ought to be able to defend our employee, but this is, if this is happened, I can't defend that.
Maybe we need to convince him, so he said, she said, and get both of them to come to me.
We can request that.
Get both sides.
Yeah, yeah, we can request that, and I would be in favor of that if we...
Or even if Ms. Hendricks didn't want to come, she could give you a written statement of her, her side of it.
Yeah. See, we tried to get away from those little quarterly things, so they didn't have to come back, didn't have to come back, but, but we're going to have, you're, you're right, we're going to have to get him here in front of all those addresses, and we're going to have to make sure that the clerk's office knows that they have our support and handling it.
It'd probably be best if we got a written statement, Ms. Hendricks, and have Tim here to meet.
I like that, have her statement and have him present, because we can direct the employee, we can direct a private citizen's right.
Okay, we'll make it happen.
What do y'all think about that?
That's a good idea.
Is that all that, anything, can we move on now?
Okay, yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
On the budget, we still have not gotten two funds from the state, they're saying sometime early to mid-August, that we should have those funds, estimates, many times, you know, I've talked about getting the bill, and talked about insurance, we have sent our RFPs out for audit services, we've got some good response from them, we should have those ready to act on, but we got the greetings from Florida League of Cities on our insurance due to our lawsuits, our workman's comp, our new buildings, our college of halls, $60,000 for insurance, the bare minimum, I can figure payroll with four employees is, and the council, is somewhere around $110,000, so you got $170,000 with payroll before you even put a drop into a repair and maintenance, operational, you know, and I'm talking with the league to see if anything...
That's probably over, that's probably over half of our total budget?
Yes, sir.
Is insurance?
Yes, sir, and payroll, and then if that audit comes back another $25,000 again this year, we're making payments on that, you know, we don't have $25,000 to pull out of a fund, when you got $15,000 order payment coming out September 1, the budget's tight now, the budget's going to be very tight next year, inflation has finally hit Wausau, our rates are high, and we're losing every rental property that was in the Smith Estate, we're losing just about 100% of those, which is a lot, our customer base, on the water system, you know, and we're not going to regain those back, you know, something may go there, but, you know, as far as benefit the town, anything that comes on these properties will be just a water and garbage pool, you know?
And all the, all the recovery money that Tim has gone?
We use those recovery monies for, to fund those positions for two years, you know, hopefully, hopefully we would have, the insurance is the main thing, we, and, you know, there's nobody going to touch us, because when you have a $330,000 workman's comp case, nobody's going to touch this town, but then we've got, and we may not get by with lower level limits on the wind damage from the winds, I'm talking with them about that, but still, it's not going, you know, when the firehouse went on the insurance, it raised our rates 50% right now, property insurance base are out of roof, they tell us now, you know, everybody's going, what we can do, I don't know, I'm going to try to have a rep from the league here for our budget workshop, to see, you know, see what they can tell us that we can do, can we do without everything but workman's comp, and liability, and vehicle insurance, the fire strokes, and we have to have workman's comp, you know, we may not put our farming or the county's workman's comp policy, brain effects on, but when we start this budget workshop, you need to fire a new bill or a blank, because it's going to be a tough one, unless we can do something about the insurance.
What about, what about, what about the money that I asked you about so many times, you told me, you didn't make sure that you did?
I did, because we used it.
She really didn't say that, but...
It's just, you know, inflation, and we've covered the expenses by using everything, we still have our CDs, you know?
The money from...
Power, yeah, it's all, that was used mostly when Ms. Fern was here.
I thought that I, I thought that I asked...
It was, we had it for a while, yeah.
But we should, I thought I asked, we'd be notified that that meter should be in town. But we should, I thought I asked, we'd be notified that that money should be in town.
Well, yeah, there was a different administration here than her.
I don't, I don't keep, I used to be notified, I didn't keep me notified.
That's true. I agree. Well, I can say, well, in the budget workshops, people have to really look at everything.
Is any of our, is any of our revenues from the state being increased?
They are. We got some increases in state revenues, yes. Our water, our water and garbage rates, so, you know, they're gonna go 5%, you know? This year, but like I said, we're losing customer base.
Will we need to have, you said you could have someone from the league here, uh, will, do we need to have anybody from any place else that is a funding source to talk to us, or? Who do, who, who do we need to have here? The blue and the blanket don't sound like a good name. I have one of my budgets till 1:00.
No, we have to do that once off.
Anybody have any questions for the person in the budget? You'll think they'll have those?
Yeah.
At our next meeting, we said our, our workshop at that time, our, our next meeting is, I think, two weeks from tonight, and they, you think they'll have by then, maybe the 17th or something like that?
That's true, they'll be in by then.
Any other questions tonight, for the second time?
Yeah, this is just letting y'all know what's going on. Animal control. Washington County, since we've had the agreement with them for the interlocal, for our dogs, they come in and done our strays, you know, occasionally, you know, without any cost. They're not, but they're going back to our interlocal agreements, which said that we will catch the strays, we will have them ready for them to pick up. And we've sent this for, to Mr. Jeff for review, but he has been trials in Nashville for two weeks, and so he hasn't responded back to us. But this is just letting y'all know, if y'all want me to see if I can get Miss Lynn with Animal with ELC to come to our next meeting and explain what's going on, or what do y'all need to do, you know? What do we? We're gonna have to step up and do animal control, being, way former fact.
Give her the cup.
Like, they say we take too many calls to them, wanting them to come out here and do too much, but, you know, that's just.
Do they charge every time they come out?
No, they charge every time they pick up.
Every time they pick up?
$65.
$65, okay.
They charge six?
Six, yeah, we pay.
So it's not like they're doing it for free?
Lynn called me yesterday and, and talked about that, and she's getting calls, calling from, from our office, but from residents inside the city themselves. They handle that by saying, well, you're in the city, you have to go to the city hall. And then they say they don't have to go to the city hall, it's local, it's county, and they pay that, whatever, 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 because they don't wanna call our city hall, they don't wanna call our employees. Uh, I told her that if I was in her place, I would say the same thing, if we had that, that said you gotta go to the city, then I'd give them that answer, too. I don't like for her to give them that answer. The, the contract or interlocal agreement, I think, like, uh, did you send that to me or did Lynn send that to me?
Lynn sent it.
Lynn sent that, and it was signed under Mrs. Palmer's administration, uh, and it's it, but, Lynn said that when they did want it, they take it to the pound, and because we don't have somebody that's got certification in animal control and things like that, there's a charge, like, seats about dogs, and then goes to whatever it goes to, and the, and the animal may be euthanized, may be adopted, or it's normal, they claim it. But they claim it with fees, and we're supposed to get those fees back.
We may not have the fees back.
Well, we might need to, we might need to be a little more diligent about how, how the case, what's the final disposition of the case, because if we're paying $65 and we pick up Paul's dog, and Paul goes up there and he has to pay 130, 40 pieces of dollars, whatever he has to pay, and give the fees and the charges and everything they carry, the first $65 of that dollar, $65 of that all come back to us, and that's what they say it is supposed to happen, they'll read that was supposed to happen, so we were, we got animals being digged. And so that we just make, the wheel keep on moving, that goes back to this last thing about, well, then how are we gonna register animals? We don't know that's Paul's dog, we don't have a tag on him, saying it's Paul's dog, so we lost that $65.
I guarantee if you get to pick up a dog and wuss off, it don't belong to nobody in this town. Our rooster or anything.
That, that being the case, we need, need to, you know, have a fish fry or something, raise enough funds to get animal control to come in here, pick up every dog, get them all so, and take them out all at one time, and not come up once in a while, just get a trip to live at one time, and take them out, pay for them all at one time.
And I, well, I retire when I do that.
If they don't, if, whether they don't block anybody, they don't block anybody. So, on animal control, you're just making us aware.
I'm making it aware, Mr. Jeff.
They did say, they did say they're, Lynn said they will continue to furnish traps and traps related.
We're supposed to have traps somewhere.
I had to take some, uh, in, retiree insurance paperwork to the office, so then I asked to see Mr. Massey, I was going to talk to him about this, see what, see, see what we can do there. We are the only town, yes, or no, because of what Miss, hey, yesterday, we are the only town that has such a contract with.
Vernon does. When did they do theirs, do they?
I don't know, when?
Are you sure?
Uh, yeah, I'm, lots of first sort of Vernon apple.
They had this discussion not long ago, and they were saying about the same thing you're saying right now.
Yeah. She said yesterday they're good in Vernon.
They may not go pick them up unless they call you.
As she may have meant to say one of the other towns, I don't know who does, but, uh, I think she said we're the only one. Let me, let me retract that and ask you to check to see how Vernon handles it. I've got to call, probably had a dozen times from one of the council persons in Vernon, who talked to me about how we do things over here, we, we just miss each other, I'm, I'm saying that, I called her four times, she talked to me three times, and, uh, you know how, how busy it is, but, see what they do in Vernon. And that's the last time we are in a, we are in a special meeting, and we can talk about other things, and that's the last item. And, and it says now we recess and, and do interviews, and then we'll come back to this meeting. If somebody has something you need to discuss before we recess, or we, is all those things that we just talked about, is it what's at stake, the reports and, and the actions? Okay, then we'll, we'll recess this meeting, and we're going to begin to interview, uh, for our position of court, we have two, three, four, five, six, six interviews, is that one? Is this mine? Well, I don't, I don't know that we can, uh, without, without my attorney, I think it's, I think I'll have to wait until you call, but I don't know that we can.
Mr. Mayor, if you'll have them sit in that chair, we'll be able to get them on camera, get them, if you'll have applicants in turn sit in that chair.
When we get to him, when we get to him, when we get to him, man.
Yeah. He goes to go. You set off the metal detectors? I guess stainless steel will do that. She didn't take any? She didn't take any? You should take it in.
Is it, is it just that, just that one thing on front page, or is there something deeper in here? I see one other place back here says receipt, and do we sign something on there also?
Um, yeah. By title also, well.
Did I sign that, or did you sign that?
Either one of these things, but I prefer either. By all prepared, and then credit, sign of the credit, and then title. I wonder if they didn't marry. They think, I wonder if they've been going like five years to get married, you know?
Uh, they're planning on it next year, when they get out of school, and get a job.
That's not too bad.
She's going to cosentology school, I hope, next week.
About there.
Next year.
If we're not gonna get this later, then no, we'll just go ahead and make it that. Okay. Is this all our evidence?
Yes.
Well, sure. Thank you all for being here this evening for our interviews with our, with our, our positions, the clerk of the town of Paul, so, uh, we have you scheduled, or we kind of scheduled, begin with a 15-minute interview, but we can't hardly say hello, how are you doing, and things like that, and give a point in your 15 minutes, so we'll take as long as we need to tonight. Uh, this is the first time we've done this in 27 years, it's, uh, almost a brand-new experience, I doubt if any of us was here the last time it was done, I don't even, I think that was one of, part of the time that I was always in council for a while, I think.
You come back the next year after I was?
I come back the next year after you.
Gail was, he, Gail was the mayor?
Gail.
Jonathan, Charles Pauls, George, my George?
Yeah, George, George was. George has been here since he was that big around. But we do appreciate you coming here tonight, we're going to do this, uh, uh, the question that we've had, and we're, we're gonna be just as upfront with you in, in, in honesty and transparency with, and the question we had was, uh, did you come in all at one time, or did you say, Al, we'll call you then? I think because we're in a public meeting, and I'm not the attorney, we actually tried to make the call to the attorney. I think because we're in a public meeting, we can't ask you to sit, sit outside, but I'm not sure that you came, because I've seen that practice also done, it may have been a mutual claim, but, uh, if any of you rather wait outside, and I'll hear what others have to say, you are welcome to do that, uh, and if not, we're going to go ahead and begin in the order that we have on our agenda, and I think probably this is the order we do, has all the notices, is that right, Marcie? Yes, okay, so this is the way that the notices went out, and we do that. All we're going to do is ask each one of you to call your name and come sit here, uh, at the end of the table, uh, we are recording the meeting, uh, we'd like for you to come sit here. Is there a microphone that goes with that?
No, I don't have that.
We don't have one?
Can they use yours, Margaret?
They can. It's like this. Can you talk it in, they hold it, talk it to you?
And we would like for you to speak into the microphone when you, when you come. Uh, each of the council members will have an opportunity to ask you questions, uh, some may be prepared, some may be just ad lib, but, uh, we would give us the, the answer that you think best, uh, represents the way that you feel at the moment, we're gonna have a whole, and that right now. Does anybody have any questions about the process before we begin the process? Uh, I don't know, members of the council, did we have questions among ourselves before we began the interviews? One of the things that I like about interviews when I, when I did them frequently was, I think it's a two-way street, I think that I, we're through, that we need to let, let them ask us any questions that we might ought to cover, either in the description or in things like that, is that acceptable, if everybody, if they also have a chance to add, to answer, to ask us questions or add the immediate things that we didn't ask them, is that what we're doing, okay? Let's begin then. Uh, Tracy Bratton. Every time that I had to do something alphabetical, I wish my name was Clint's or something. All right, oh, so, so, uh, we have six applicants, we can do this, we, we want to make sure that everybody feels like that we're all deeply here, uh, finally, we let each one of us begin to interview, uh, with them, for the different applicant. We can all interview, just to kick off, let each one of us interview, uh, somebody first, is that okay with everybody? All right, Mr. Bradburg, would you like to short your, your?
Sure.
Okay.
How effective are you at creating, presenting, and monitoring budgets?
Well, I have directed Kids World for 18 years. Um, I did payroll, I did all the ordering, through the ordering. I did the accounting for payroll, I, um, basically ran it like it was mine. So I was over everything, paying, you know, bills, um, making sure everything was paid on time. I have computer experience to, as well. And then I work for, you know, myself at home with the daycare, um, again, I took care of payments, taking payments, um, sending out notices, you know, as well.
Tell us about yourself, I don't know about you and your family.
Well, I'm married to Chad Bratton, um, been married 27 years this year, um, I have two children. My daughter's Brianna Bratton, she's 24, just recently got married last year, um, and then Chase Bratton, just let y'all know, um, is engaged to Judy Carter's granddaughter, Katie Carter, um, they've been together for two, two and a half years. We've lived in Chipley for the last 30 years, uh, we lived in, we lived in Balsall, bought at Pond Road, um, for 13 years. Currently, I'm working at Grayson Glory Christian School, I'm doing business, my boards a year, I'm attending.
What did you do at Grayson Glory?
Grayson Glory, the first two years I was there, I was the kindergarten teacher, um, last year, I did some office work, um, as well as, um, cooking, um, a bus driver for them. I did PE, I was a sub, just, and actively, that's what I'll be doing the same as this year.
Have you ever had any experience with five grants, or anything like that?
We did, I did, um, do the grants at, at Kids World, um, for playground, um, equipment, um, I did those, um, for that, and then of course, you know, I worked closely with ECF, um, ELC, and all the funding for that as well. as well. We were accredited, I got the center accredited, and I was there through three of those with bookkeeping and all.
What would be your biggest weakness, if they not having? That may be harder.
I'm sure everybody has weaknesses, and there's always room for improvements.
That probably would have skipped me the question.
No, I mean, everybody has weaknesses and things. I mean, really good in town, I mean.
Where do you see yourself in five years from now?
I was late here.
So you plan on staying here, or you get a job, or do you plan on?
No, I do plan to stay here.
Stay here, do you get something better?
No, I do plan to stay here, serving Walsall, City of Walsall. So I plan to be here, so.
Why do you want to work for the city?
Well, I like serving families, serving people. I feel that I'm a people person. I deal with conflict, upset, you know, clients. I just, I enjoy working with people and being with people.
Can you stay calm during the crisis, like we've been talking about earlier this afternoon?
Yes, ma'am.
Describe an instance when your sense of ethics and integrity were tested.
Well, I had, just an example, when I worked at Kids World, there was upset parent where child was dead and couldn't visually see it on the camera, of course, because of the location. So when the parent asked to see the camera and see where her child was, why it took place, she got very upset because of the location, there was a blind spot there. So she got, you know, very upset. Of course, ECF, they come out, did their investigation, which it was a pretty bad fight, the child, the other child that drew blood on the child, and they're fighting. So, of course, I was basically called different things in the book. So I just had, you know, went through the procedures with that and just, you know, did the best that I could do to help please the situation.
Think you'd like to hold people?
Yes, sir, I do. Prior to me.
The way.
Prior to working at Kids World, I did do nursing, so I worked in the nursing home as well. I did that after my school. So, yes, sir, I worked with elderly as well.
Now, you live on Bonnet Pond or you live in Chibley?
I live in Bonnet Pond, yes, sir.
You do live in a good community?
You go to Chibley, I agree, it's John.
You got, yeah, okay, yeah.
I live right there beside Cookie Hill Horn.
Cookie?
Yes, sir, yeah. Right beside a horn hangers.
You rock the sign before you get to the sign?
Yes, sir.
Okay, gotcha.
Before I ask anything, let me tell you, there's probably a few people out there holding any higher regard than that of your listen.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate them 100%.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Bracken, I guess you about budget, I'm not sure, I'm not sure that you gave an answer. What, what's your experience, have you ever created, balanced, or worked on a budget? Have you ever monitored or made budget projections?
I did monitor, I have, um, I monitored it, as far as doing the other, I have not, because we had an accountant that took care of a lot of that. But as far as monitoring the, you know, what goes in and out, I did.
You've read the job description. Can you do all the different wires and do you understand that it says or infers that you will be the day-to-day supervisor of Marcy and Tim or other employees that may come later, you will be the supervisor? That will include being able to give commands, write up evaluations and things like that, and monitor time off and the whole thing, the supervisor would do for employees. Do you understand that you will be doing that as well?
Yes, sir. And I also did that because we're all, I did all evaluations on all the employees there and all.
Have you ever prepared or responded to an audit?
No, sir.
Mr. Watson, may I ask a question, your biggest weakness and I'd like to know what you think your biggest strength is?
Well, my strength, I believe, is working, you know, being friendly, working with people, clients. Always keep in mind that the client is always right. I, um, I'm on time. I take pride in what my work. I do the best of my ability to do the best I can at everything I do.
Are you familiar with comprehensive planning and land development codes?
No, sir.
You said something about a grant, I thought I got a question on grants.
You have experience researching or applying for?
Probably not really. Yeah, yes. Have you ever researched, applied for, or administered a grant? Go out and look for it, apply for it, get it, do the whole thing over.
Yes, sir, I did. I did that at Kids World for playground equipment to upgrade. Because we had guidelines and such things that we had to follow. Like I said, working with ECF and ELC.
I don't think I have anything that hasn't been asked, in my guess, that hasn't been asked by somebody. Ms. Bracken, any more questions?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Watson, that? Ms. Carter? Ms. Carter? Ms. Bracken, would you like to ask us questions or tell us something about your shift that we didn't ask, that you think would hip your case, hip your application?
Well, if I'm chosen, I, like I said a while ago, I will, you know, do the best that I can to serve the town of Walsall, best of my ability. I'm willing to learn anything that I, that I don't know or haven't done, I'm willing to learn it, just early to town of Walsall.
We appreciate you taking the time to apply, having an interest in the town, and coming to this interview tonight.
I've got one more question. About working. Do you, part-time or full-time? How many hours a week do you plan on working?
I'm full-time. I would, I'm willing to work five days a week, 40 hours a week. I mean, I'm willing to do, you know, I'm used to working five days, I'm used to working eight, 10, 12-hour days, so.
Well.
You know, honestly, the more hours, the more days is good with me. Early, you know, I get there early, if I'm supposed to be there at eight, I'm there at 7:30, whatever, you know, so hours is not an issue. So I'm willing to work whatever, more than married.
So if it was only part-time, would you still be interested?
Yes.
And I think everybody should know that this is a 20, the maximum 28 hours per week. The start salary is $15.01 per hour.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, anybody else have anything else for Ms. Bracken? Thank you, Kent, and we will make a decision later tonight or at our regular meeting. At our regular meeting, we'll make a decision, our regular meeting in two weeks, and we will notify you at that time if you're the successful candidate, okay?
Yes, sir. Can I read the lead?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kent. Ms. Blassgo?
Can I ask Tracy one more question?
Tracy, I got one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
If a borderline lights in the south at 2:00 in the morning, like we've had half of these times before, do you feel if you get a call out in the middle of the night, you can make it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That's an excellent question.
Yes, ma'am.
That's an excellent question.
Yeah, I'll be here.
Bringing weight and boots and a shirt.
Right.
We'll have a shirt.
Lots of flashlights.
Yeah. Okay. Ms. Blassgo, and if it's all right with the rest of you, we don't say all the things I said, I think everybody heard our greeting and things like that. We appreciate you being here tonight, so why don't we just begin with the special time again, right with the interviews? And Mr. Watson, I would like you to begin this time, please.
Okay, I'm ready, I'm prepared, okay. You really want to work for Towne Walsh on the old people?
Absolutely. It's my home.
Have you ever prepared a budget of, you know, how any things in the past should be similar to your job?
Yes, sir, I have. I've dealt with large budgets in the past with certain clients in my previous positions.
What were your previous positions?
I've been in printing and advertising and box making, believe it or not. Yeah, so.
Boxes.
Have you ever applied to or done all that before?
I have not performed beyond it, but I've been involved with audits.
Tell us about yourself.
Okay. My parents retired here about 35 years ago, from Atlanta, and of course, this was our summer gathering place, my home, and.
Are me talking to the microphone?
Oh, I'm not, oh, sorry. So I've been coming down here for the past 35 years, and I've lost both of them, and their home was vacant, and I tried renting it, and it was a disaster. And during COVID, everybody was moving back home. I was living in Oregon, not a happy place for me. So I asked if I could work remote, and they said yes. But I got my fourth manager in one year that did not like the fact that I was working remote, so they let me go in October. So I'm ready to find a new position.
How many hours a week are you very willing to work?
I'm willing to work the full week, but I understand the position is the 28 hours for now. I mean, if something changes, of course, I'd be willing to do whatever it takes, hour-wise.
Have you ever had any experience researching grants or working on grants?
I have to be honest, I have not had the opportunity to work on any grants.
This is a good place to learn right here.
Good.
How do you prioritize and organize a board of workers?
Well, I usually look at what is the most important to accomplish first, and then I also look at what is going to take the most time to accomplish, and then break out the priorities from there.
Where do you see yourself in five years from now?
Like the previous interviewer, hopefully here.
How long did you work in Oregon? You from Oregon?
I'm not from Oregon, no. I mean, I got caught up in the housing explosion in 2009, and I had this company reach out to me, and that's when I moved to Oregon. I didn't want to move to Oregon. It's a beautiful country, but it's different there. But, you know, I would prefer to stay right here, like I said, Walsall's my home.
Before the boxing company, where did you work?
I worked for, it's a media company. We did photography, retouching, and advertising in Atlanta. It was a small group, a small studio, basically, but we handled a lot of advertising and handled a lot of budgets for my clients there.
Could you hold up under pressure in these stressful situations we get into?
I have been under tons of pressure in my previous career. I don't think I'd have a problem at all. Of course, there's always that possibility of that one thing that we don't expect, but.
But I was very scared.
Yeah.
Oh, are you familiar, let me, let me go back and ask you something else first. Do you have any experience, and I should have asked Mrs. Bracken, but do you have any experience in the governmental ring?
Well, a little bit here and there. I've worked for law firms in the past, but, you know, in small counties, that was a long time ago.
Are you familiar with comprehensive planning and land development codes?
No, sir, I am not, but willing to learn.
I think someone asked about the research and applying and administering grants, and there's a difference between the grants that, you may find a difference in the grants that we apply for and administer as opposed to those that comes from foundations and corporations and things like that. You have, or have researched, we're always asked, well, why don't you get a grant for that? And we don't always know there is a grant for something, or if there isn't one. Have you got experience in research and finding that grant that applies or to administer?
I don't have experience in actually on grants, but I have a lot of experience on research.
Do you have any experience in personnel supervision? You understand by the, by the job description that you, the other employees of the city would be answering to you on a day-to-day basis? Do you have personal management experience?
Yes, sir, I do. Yes, sir, I've managed approximately nine people in an office. It was a printing company, and I handled all the interviewing, reviews, even job, I mean, because we had clients, assigning clients to certain personnel, depending on fit.
Same question, Mr. Watson, have you had, what are your biggest strengths and weaknesses?
Strengths? I mean, I think I'm very, I don't know the right word. It's very easy for me to work with different types of people or different types of personality and handling pressure. I do have a little bit of book. I do have a little bit of bookkeeping background, so finances are pretty easy for me. My weaknesses? Probably when things don't go as quickly as I often do.
I don't know if that's a weakness or a weakness. How do you react to that?
Right, exactly.
Yes. We're very few things. Just as quick as we want to. Anything?
Are you sort of a people person? Do you love people?
Yes, sir. I mean, that's been my core, my core job description in every job I've ever had, whether it be with clients, customer service, all of it.
Did you ever work in the cake baking business?
No, sir. I have only tried to make bread about three times and it failed, so no, I did not do it. The bakery, no.
Jazza made our daughter's wedding cake. And that's been a long time ago, too, hasn't it?
She made a wall cake.
She did.
Pretty cake.
She did. In Atlanta, I mean, she made huge cakes.
Yeah.
I don't know how she did it, but I don't have the patience for all that decorating.
Does anyone on the council have any other questions for Ms. Blaster? Do you have questions for us?
No, I don't think so. Thank you very much, Charlie.
Anything about your shift we didn't ask that you tell us?
No, no. I mean, there's probably something that is not coming to my mind right now.
Well, again, we appreciate you coming, having an interest in the town, making the application.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you, thank you. Do you have any information? Your board of chair?
Not yet.
Ms. Ude, you want to start this time?
Hi. Then tell us about yourself.
That's always a good question.
Well, of course, I was born and raised in Wausau, local girl. Been here my whole life. Have three children, well, two biological children and a stepson. They all live in the area. Retired in 2016, decided I was going to be a good retiree, but find myself now kind of bored with it all. Of course, I was county commissioner in 2012 to 2016 and stayed abreast of the local development since then. And I love the town of Wausau, thank you.
Your work experience as a county commissioner, what did you retire from?
The state of Florida. Prior to that, I worked for the Panhandle Area Educational Consortium for many years, which was the school system. Our actual employer was the school board. So I was there for, finished up my state retirement, really through there, managing, I was the assistant to the director of technology, managed his grant, worked with the state, worked with 67 county board. And so I was there for quite a while doing budgets, finance, that kind of stuff. I had almost enough time to retire, went for county commissioner, and finished out my time.
So your application got part-time all of March for your more than two.
Well, at the time, I didn't realize 28 hours was full-time. I thought that was part-time.
You meant part-time, Mr. Lachey, 40-hour week where you came in?
Right, yeah. I am, I'm willing to work with 28 hours. If it's a parent of budget concerns, if it's something that needs to go back to less than 28 hours, I'm willing to do that, too. As long as I've got something valuable to offer to Wausau, I'll do whatever we need to do.
Have you prepared for an audit or are you?
We did do audits at the Panhandle Area Educational Consortium. We were constantly being audited by the state. Most of our funding come from the Department of Education. And so we had what they call a continuing audit. So people would come in, they would pull our records, that kind of stuff. They would randomly call us, and we would send records to Tallahassee. And so I have a lot of experience in auditing.
Are you familiar with comprehensive planning and development, stuff like that?
Absolutely. As a county commissioner, comprehensive planning and land development, that kind of stuff, was something we constantly did. When I was a commissioner, we worked heavy on the, what we call the Highway 77 corridor, which was a plan that we put in place so that you could fast-track if you wanted to change your land usage from residential to commercial, because we were trying to build it, the 77 corridor. And so we worked, I worked really close with the county on that.
You wouldn't have a land development problem with shorty managing that city in the void?
No, not at all. Well, I was at the Panhandle Area Educational Consortium. We had a warehouse. And I, along with my other job, got assigned to be managing the warehouse. And so I was over those employees from the time I was there. So I did both jobs, really.
How long were you there?
You know, I can't remember. I've got it on my, my fingers, I looked up the dates, but I can't remember. Oh, seven, eight, nine years, something like that. I can't remember if it's okay.
Epstein, your question is that how long she was at the P A C altogether or how long she was a warehouse manager?
Warehouse manager. Oh, I would say probably six years of the time that I was at the P A C. The warehouse had consistently lost money, and P A C was trying to, actually thinking about getting out of the business. And what we did was that we provided professional development to teachers online. So if you needed your C E U's as a teacher, that P A C had this thing where you could go on and do your work online, and we would give you the credentials for it. And so, but we also had a warehouse where you could order the materials. And so they had come to the point where the warehouse was about to shut down. And the executive director, Paula Waller at the time, asked me, did I think I could bring it back into the, you know, into the black? And she gave me a year to do it. And in eight months, I had to earn the money. And so we continued on warehouse until I left, actually left.
Describe an instance when your sense of ethics and integrity were tested.
Well, as a county commissioner, that was pretty often. That was very often. I would just say that many times as a commissioner, I had people call me and ask me for favors that I knew went against ethical and moral standards of a public official. And I consistently said I would not have any part of it, many times.
What is your strength and weaknesses?
I think my strength is that I'm a good worker, I'm a hard worker, I'm a team player, I'm flexible. I don't mind reading the meters or digging up the meters or whatever it takes to make, you know, the town run. I have a high work ethic. My weakness is probably that I don't like how slow things run either. There's a lot of processes I find in life to get from A to B. So having to work through processes of government, city government, county government, sometimes is very frustrating.
I bet big in the electrical line.
Being the person that's, quote-unquote, in charge of the day-to-day, do you use that weakness to make things look faster for us?
I think so, absolutely. You know, if we can figure out easier and better ways to do things, I'm all about it. I'm all about trying something new, you know, seeing if we can tweak something, change something. You know, I won't ever go into the unethical area, ever. I won't do it. But I think presenting the council and say, you know, well, we've always done it this way, but let's try it this way, see if this is a little better, maybe we can save some money. Maybe we can, you know, get to the end of the process quicker. I'm all about doing that to present to the council.
Where do you see yourself in a few years from now, five or six years, something like that?
Well, I hope to work. You know, someone had asked me, he said, well, how long do you want to work? I said, as long as the Lord gives me a good mind and a clear mind, you know, I'm just going to work right on.
Oh, you talk about budgeting a little bit. Have you ever, have you ever been taught on making budget projections? I know that, we all know that at this time of year, the parishers and all other municipalities, et cetera, are making their budgets. And somebody has to take what we have done, here's the old budget proposal, here's what we're going to go and make the distribution and things like that. But I think that sometimes budget projections on a quarterly or some kind of basis like that, have just happened. Have you ever done anything like that?
I can refer back to my P A C days. I was in charge of the entire budget for the technology department. It was several million, I can't remember on exactly what. But one of the things that I was responsible for was the budget projections. And we had monthly budget meetings where we went in. And I would always tell them we were having budget, you know, in regards to what the fiscal year was, what we felt like we were going to need somewhere down the road. And then, you know, of course, as the commission, we were always making budget decisions, changes, that kind of stuff.
In terms of technology, what is your background there? We've got QuickBooks doing off, but then don't we have some other?
Elrock.
Yeah.
What was that?
Elrock, network system.
I'm not familiar with that. I can do QuickBooks, Word.
Excel.
Excel, most all the computer programs I can do.
You realize you have five offices plus 398 employees?
Absolutely.
I'm like Mr. Charlie Warfield out there. I used to talk, and I told her something, I'm a little hasty now. But doing the computer and the technology is not a challenge. I mean, it's not something we can't do. We have to. Anybody have anything further to add, Bur?
No, sir.
Mr. Walsh, now? Do you want to ask us anything?
Nothing at all. I just wanted.
Let me rip down, well, they come back by the way. Once, once we, you know, place my several, I'm listening right, you speak. Once this council makes a decision, and it may be against the advice that you give us, you may think you've offered us this information and things like that. This is what we propose, but we decide to do something else. Do you do what we decide to do, or do you?
Absolutely.
Everything.
Yeah. I hope my contribution is to offer you different settings, different solutions, and then let you pick the ones that you think are the best for our town.
Okay, you started to ask us or tell us.
Though what I thought you were going to ask me was about grants. I thought someone asked you. Anyway, I love researching grants, love researching grants. I recently, last year, wrote a grant for some fire equipment, and we received it $40,000. Then the year before that, I had written another grant also for some fire equipment for $40,000. I have one sitting on the table right now for something else that I passed through the first base for. But I know he's a large grant writer, and I don't want to portray that.
Devout, devout.
No, I'm not a large grant writer, but I do know how to research them and what they're looking for in grant writing, so.
I think we all know most of the, after the specific candidates were interviewed tonight. And again, cannot ever be very clear on that. If you tend to work for us, if you're going to be researching grants for fire departments, I want you to be our fire department first. Know the unique road that you will find yourself, could find yourself in. If you're going to work for us, I would like ours, ours needs to be the first. Of course, there's probably enough room to do multiple, but we don't need any ramp. Quality issues, I don't think there will be. No, I wouldn't, I would hope there would not be. Okay, anything else? Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you for coming, for taking an interest in our town.
Sure.
Tessa Kirkland.
Ms. Kirkland, I didn't know she was qualified, and she thought that she needed a.
She's already gone, okay. Janet Miller. Okay, Miss Miller, again, thank you for coming. And if it's all right, I'll just take Judy's line this time. I haven't spoken first yet, and I just start off by telling us about yourself. I think that's a good question for you.
Okay, I worked for Winixie for 20 years, center store manager and general merchandise manager. Worked for the city of Ludhague for 14 years. I've been across the north for seven. Pretty much, you know, worked all my life.
Just about your name. My mother and father's deceased, and I have three kids, two boys, two girls and a boy. And they all good, you know. I live up here in Wausau, 3663 Washington Street. Where Ms. Miller lives, but.
Mary Miller's married, yeah.
Mary Miller's house?
Well, you should say James Star, we might need you.
The Mary Miller house?
Yes, sir.
Been clean enough around there, trying to get it cleaned up, you know. That's a full-time job.
When you worked at City of Atlanta, did you say you worked for City of Atlanta?
Yes, sir.
Did you do any grants or?
No, sure. I don't know anything about grants.
You were more of a clerk or?
I do all their cleaning for them and stuff like that.
When you worked at Winixie, what'd you say you did there?
I was center store manager and general merchandise manager. Ordered stuff, you know, were different people, you know. They work under me, and I tell them what they need to do and make schedules and stuff like that. And we do inventory and stuff.
Are you retired now?
Yeah.
Where you work at now?
City of Ludhague.
Oh, okay.
But see, I live up here, I'm trying to get closer to home.
Right.
Do you work full-time with city development?
I've been with him over ten years. Worked with the police department, crossing the border for seven. And then when people got where they stand there in the old cushing, you know, you just grin and smile and go on with your business, have a nice day.
That's all.
That's all we need, is first order of statement.
I had one lady cuss me out every morning, every morning. I looked at her and I said, "You have a nice day, ma'am, I hope it gets better." She looked at me and she just started cussing me again. So I told my boss, and he comes down there the next morning, he says, "Is that all?" I said, "Yes, sir." He said, I said, "Just a minute, she'll let you know." And she did, and she started cussing me again. She says, "I can't see why you're blocking that entrance, 'cause ma'am, the kids go up that way and not the adults."
When you managed Winnixie, how many people did you manage?
Oh, I must say fifty or more. It was in, you know, first and food dairy, grocery.
Dairy department?
Yes, ma'am.
You did for the whole building?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do you have any bookkeeping experience?
No, ma'am, I don't have none of that.
What about computer experience?
I can do some computer, I'm not best.
You're leaving full-time employment for part-time?
Yes.
As it relates to forty hours versus what we're offered?
Right. It's twenty, yeah, not twenty-eight, we do.
And you're gonna be, you're gonna be satisfied with that?
Yes, sir. 'Cause I do house cleaning on the side, and I clean office on the side.
Are you familiar with comprehensive planning or land development codes?
No, sir, I don't really do that.
Audits?
No, we did audits, so we're decent. And believe me, my boss, he'd stay after you, we always had a good audit, so. 'Cause if you didn't have good audits, you didn't stay there.
Do you know what parts of the budget are?
Hmm, no. I'm sure I can.
Where do you see you sit down to work?
Well, if I get this job right here.
For how long?
As long as y'all need me.
Okay.
'Cause see, I've been walking distance here. This is a little bit of a ride, I get up at two o'clock in the morning, go to work. And I work like four to twelve on Monday, five to one on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. So hours is no problem.
No, twelve to five, no problem.
No, ma'am. I always work, you know, twelve-hour shifts when I work at Winnixie, so no big deal. I don't sleep a whole lot anyway.
That's why you're getting old, but no, you ain't old, I'm sorry.
Hey, we're getting there, we're getting there.
I see you're saying that.
Hey, we are, we are, it ain't no big deal.
Did, did one of you ask about the grant? I, I don't see an answer, but did one of you ask about the grants? Are you familiar with applying for or administrative?
No, sir, I've never done none of that.
But if you feel like you could manage our, our two or three or four employees, if that books, now we have, now we have two in a vacant position, but you feel like managing three or four is not gonna be as difficult to manage as fifteen?
No, sir, it can't be.
Well...
We had two Russian guys out there at workforce at Winnixie, and if you told them to do one thing, you can bet they're gonna do the opposite. 'Cause we told them, we said, "Don't go to lunch at the same time now, 'cause one of you's gotta work on the truck, and one of you's got to go to lunch." You go to the office and you're doing your thing, you know, you come back out. Well, by then it's gone. So they come back in, and I look at them, I said, "Hi," I said, "Oh, Ash, do one of you stay and thread the truck?" "Yes, ma'am." He said, "But we didn't see that, we wanted to stay and do it, so we went to lunch." I said, "Okay." I said, "Do you remember what the boss told you next time you done that?" He says, "Well, yeah." I said, "Okay, then good, time clock, I got to go on." They looked at me and they started screaming in their Russian voice, you know, and then they called HR next day, and she come out and she says, "Jan?" She says, "I got a report on you." I said, "And I know who you got from?" She says, "Yes, ma'am." And she done her little review, she said, "You in the right, so ain't no big deal." I said, "Well, I try to treat everybody fair, you know, treat people like you want me treated."
I don't think I have anything else. Do we have questions you'd like to ask us, or comments you'd like to make?
No, sure, I'm good. I normally ask Margaret questions if I want to know anything.
Yep, that's probably, that's probably where I'd ask.
I would too. If I need notes, I'll call Margaret or get, uh, run the call.
Do you know, do you know Henry Pitts or Gloria Thompson from the city of Lynn Haven?
No, sir.
No, no?
I know of Mr. Ray and Miss Patsy.
Yeah.
Right there beside us.
Yeah. Gloria, I think works in the, I think they both bill, I think, I think Henry is a building inspector and Gloria is a urbanist.
Henry Pitts?
Pitts.
Yeah, I mean, he used to work for Lynn Haven.
He's still there?
He's back there.
He's back there, yeah.
Is he back there?
Yep.
I didn't see him back.
I've heard he's not away for that, but I don't know.
Well, last time I talked to him, when he was there, he said, he said, "I don't want to come back," he says, "I'm tired of Lynn Haven."
Well, thank you for coming.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Yeah, thanks to the town.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. You have a nice night.
You too. Denise Spencer, I'm, I'm gonna guess that's you.
That's me. Life is a little slow.
Yeah, and having to sit here through all the introduction of all the answers.
You know that is a question.
Okay, Mr. Park, you haven't started first, have you? Not yet, but I'll, you fix it, go ahead. Okay, have you ever worked on budgets or creative budget?
I have not. I have been a teacher for years, my whole life, I've worked with children my whole life. I have worked at Tool Time, building and roofing, and I work for Benson Nissan in East Bay, South Carolina. And I've done some secretarial work and bookkeeping and things like that.
Have you ever responded to or prepared for an audit or anything like that?
I have not.
Okay.
I am willing to learn.
Okay.
When was your life short, what do you do now?
Um, I was a teacher, I have Grace and Glory last year, yes, sir. And so I'd like to put a word in for Tressie, she's an awesome woman. I know this is my interview, but I just feel like I'm supposed to, you know, just let you know that she's a hard worker, and she's committed to her job. And, Lord, I didn't mean to make this about Tressie, I promise, but, um, yeah, she, she would be a good fit if I'm not, so. But consider me first, please.
I was thinking the one question we didn't ask tonight, if we asked with our other employees, was why would you be the best person to, I really haven't asked anybody that, I don't know. We asked that when we, when there was a...
When Marcy was retired?
When Marcy was retired, yeah.
You can ask me that question, and I'll tell you why I feel like I'd be the best man.
Jealous.
Okay. I'm committed, I'm loyal, I'm honest, integrity means a lot to me. I won't move for my integrity. But I'm loyal to those who I, who I serve, I'm loyal to family, friends, and businesses. I put others first, always, sometimes to my detriment. I'm honest to, sometimes to my detriment, I'm a truth seeker. And I give my all, I'm on time, punctual. I love people, and I'm conservative of people, I'm healthy or anything else, and I put God first in all things.
I see on your application, you're interested in forty hours, and then it looked like you did full or part-time.
Yes, sir, 'cause I wasn't sure at first how many hours, but when I found out it was twenty-eight, it's, I'm perfectly content with twenty-eight, so.
And can you work in nights, you were saying that?
I said no to nights. Oh, I did? Oh, well, it's just me, I have no one other with me, so if you need me for nights, I can do nights.
Well, this time?
I'm getting old, and so, you know, I get sleepy, you know?
This time in November, it'll be nights.
Yes, yes, I can do nights, if you need me at night, or whenever you need me, you can do it.
Really, our night meetings are few don't show things? They're sealed, it's not a bag. Yeah, this attorney, I'll ask, uh, do you have any experience with comprehensive planning or land development coaches?
I have not done the paperwork for any of that. I did work for Tool Time, or they did things like that, but I didn't personally do anything in that. I was administrative assistants to parts in, um, building at Tool Time.
What were saying?
Tool Time Building and Roofing, panelists in.
Yeah.
Jennifer Connel's owner, and I worked under Nick Mollane, Michael Bay, obviously.
How effective were you at creating, presenting, and monitoring budgets?
I've never done budgets, um, but planning and being creative comes, is part of teaching, and I'm very good at that. I've done lesson plans and things like that, so I don't know how that would fit with this, but I love paperwork, I'm detail oriented, um, so I could do that, I feel I could do that.
And what kind of computer experience do you have?
Um, I've done Word, I've done Excel, and I don't remember the program we used at Tool Time. I worked with two different ones, 'cause they had the roofing company, and then they had the shed company, and I worked for both of them, I went between the two, and so I worked with programs for both of those. And I, I wanna say it was QuickBooks, it was something like that, I didn't do budgets, but I did, like, I had to put in, inputs and outputs in the program for parts order, for jobs done, everything that had to do with all of that, I had to put that information in. And then I did scheduling also, but that was at the, the shed company on the other side.
What's the most employee you've ever managed?
I've not managed employees, but I've managed children. You're about the same.
I need to read the book on that.
I, I have to say, I worked closely with Nick, and I watched how he worked with the men, and I'm like, oh, yeah, it's just like working with kids, so.
You, you read the, you read the applicant, the job description, and you understand that it says or infers, I think they actually said at this time, that you would be the supervisor of our office and field employees here, which is about three people, most of it would be right now maximum, would be three, not two, and you can do that.
I think I could, I think I could, I've not done it before, I'll be honest with you, but I think I could.
The second time that one comes in, they work late, or where you want to be?
I'll treat them like I do my students, you listen the first time, you don't break the first time, you know, you know when you're, you're an adult, you need to come in when you're scheduled to come in. And what, I don't know what your penalties would be for that, so whatever you guys would say would be the penalty, I would follow your protocol, so I would do. But I'm not, I don't, I don't play games. You're called to do a job, you're an adult, you do your job, and you show up.
Okay. Mr. Park, anything else? Ryan Bird?
No, sir.
What would you like to ask us, or say to us?
Well, I have plenty of questions, but since I'm the last one, I guess I'll say goodnight.
I will, I will tell you that I perform like a citizen, and that was, that was very good. Thank you for taking any interest in our application, in our application, in our interview, and then we'll, we'll be into.
Thank you for considering for the topic, really appreciate it.
Mr. Nick lives right here, while I was off to live in the Methodist church, Park Street.
No, I live in, just the Park's house?
Oh, Vansford's house, yeah.
The pool house?
I had a rower.
Oh, I'm not wrong.
Yeah, I had a rower.
Okay, okay, there was one?
Yeah.
You work in chip? Huh, do you work in chip? I did a Grace and Glory, I was chip.
Oh, that's right.
Are you non-working now? I just went by that application, and I, I thought you were still working, and I thought you lived in Lynette, you?
I do, that is Lynette.
On Roland, in Roland's house.
That's a chip address.
Chip address?
Yeah, Wolfso.
Yeah.
Thank folks for living in Wolfso, we have a Wolfso.
Well, thanks, same way.
Makes things get mixed up, yeah.
You'd be asking?
My mailbox is on the route, but I go to the post office, give, I mean, my nine-one-one, show the chip address. My address is the post office. Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
I think the interview process worked very well. Yes, we just now have to look at our notes, or the first night. Before we go back into the record session, and then, and then return, we'll be, do a detour, we'll talk about any of the interviews tonight. All right, then, we will, we will close the interview process, go back into our regular meeting, having covered all the things from the first half there. Mr. Park, do you have anything tonight? Uh, Ms. Carter?
I'm just concerned about Tim not wanting three sixty on his phone. I think if he comes in in the morning, the market asking for his phone, but five three sixty, I would be done, then he'll, he'll disappear in the right door.
We'll study if he gets home.
Right.
We'll put it on our phone.
Have him turn in his phone and keys.
I agree with that.
I agree with that.
Here's, here's where we are, though. He goes home at that afternoon, one of these nights out here, blows out the mail, people pee, go on the beach.
I could have a fore, hire a contractor.
Exactly. You'd end up hiring a contractor anyway.
Yeah, that was a very exaggerated illustration, but, uh... I don't know.
He needs to respect, he needs to respect this office.
He does, he does, I'm, we a hundred percent. He does, I'm with you a hundred percent.
And seems to me like he's not doing that.
I'm with you a hundred percent. We need a second person, uh, I didn't notice these gauges and these whales and all those kind of things, because if I don't miss mine, yes, we're probably fixing to advertise for somebody to replace the other, only other person we have that knows that stuff. And, and if we did, if we did say we come to replace where we just missed Tim, and I'm not opposed to it, I'm, I'm gonna reiterate, I think you got on the right track. But we're gonna have to have somebody that can, uh, keep our water system going, given it neighbors. Do we have somebody like that that we can contact?
We have someone, yes, that we, we take, we have, uh, we still, you know, Thomas Richardson, he's, doesn't live here anymore, but he, he's, he's still working the company, um... We have, um, a couple more that, you know, used to live in town, they may not live right here now, but they're, they're, they may, if it comes to it, you know?
I'm just most concerned about the operator, because they'd have to have some kind of certifications and things like that. I'm more concerned about the worshippers, that would be any other thing that we got to, uh, we've got to keep that worship. Can we agree with what Ms. Carter just said? Do you want to make, do you want us to make a motion on that so that you...
So we gotta make a motion for you to ask him for his phone Monday morning? I wanted to see him come back. We just take you to go on.
That's why we're not gonna, we just want the three-sixty to be on his phone.
We're gonna explore the house that the GPS, um...
By default, by default, we make a decision, always one of y'all do or vote.
Vote.
We'll debate.
Okay, uh, and all the laws are sitting, that's a good first.
Three-sixty is free. GPS will have to pay for it?
Yes.
Yes.
Could we do like mandatory morning meetings, so we're all on the same page for the day or, or weekly or something?
I think that needs to happen, uh... In beginning of these things, we've had a time clock and didn't have one and had one and didn't have one and things like that, uh... The nature of people, not to make a violent accusation against anybody, the nature of people is, if we don't have accountability, sometimes we do go back to it. And if he doesn't come and do a time clock, have a morning meeting with, uh, the clerk and things like that. And right now, I know that's difficult with Margaret, we're two days a week, but we're fixing to get somebody who's gonna work four days a week. And, and they will be every morning, most, every job that I do, every morning, there's assignments or something like that. Have y'all, have y'all seen the number of job orders we've got in here? They must, that whole countertop, eight or ten feet of it is, is solid job orders in there. Some of them...
Some about work orders?
Work orders, yes. Uh, some of them, some of them may be important, some of them may be things that we just kind of want to see done, make the town look better and all of that. But there will be some job orders, work orders given out in the morning, there will be some completion orders brought back in or after that day brought back in.
He, uh, he had started, he don't have the daily worksheets again.
Okay, that's from, that's, see, we speak from our experiences, that's the world that I come from. We, we had these to do, uh, we had a meeting every morning in the group forum, we had a meeting every morning with every partner. The doses was, the trucks were, the Mackos, the Bushogs, et cetera. That evening they came back in and said, "Oh, seven loads of dirt, ready, thirty miles of road, we had something coming." And, and we need to, we need to have accountability, I'll, I'll tell us, we're being watched by the people of our community. And I don't mind that, I don't mind accountability, but when we're not doing, we're not doing it or having it done. And they accuse us, we've been, we've pushed the fence.
No, and I think that's a good idea, because it was brought up before, you know, how they don't even come in here to see if there's work orders. And that would give some sort of accountability, you could go through the work orders and prioritize them, hey, you know, this needs to be done first or whatever, and then you kind of halfway know where, what vicinity he is in.
And you'll know what time he's getting work.
And whatnot.
I, I think that he should have to come in here in the mornings and fill out a time sheet of some sort and again in the afternoon before he leaves.
Who's walking now?
Well, yeah, I think we too, Lynette.
Yeah.
Yeah, what he can't do.
Yeah, we, we just need, yeah. He sure does.
It makes me think he's just, it's my, my move right away, except it makes me think he's just using us, doing us any way he wants to and getting by with it.
I probably need to just address this to him, but because I've never, I try never to keep anything from y'all. I've been told that he, had said that, uh, that his daddy and I were good friends and, and he wasn't worried. I can assure you.
I heard that.
You've heard that?
I heard that.
I can assure every one of you on account, I know his daddy, he worked for me about fifteen years ago, twenty years ago. Probably haven't seen him since that time. I know his daddy because he was a former employee. There's no relationship, there's no favors, there's no obligations. He's here on his own merits and he has to stay here on his own merits.
I'm glad you feel that.
That bothers me, uh... Some things, some things bother me that once might not have, but it bothers me. Somebody said a while ago, maybe the licensed person here, a couple of them did about their integrity and, uh, honestly, that's not that. Uh, it, after all the years that, that you've been service and I, I asked for the job, I wanted to do it, and I, the people will make those kinds of comments, that bothers me. Do we all, do we all agree then with Ms. Carter's recommendation, that soon, uh, maybe when we get a three-sixty on that and we'll have...
I'll call every day month that comes back, yes. I don't know if she'll see a bunch of you.
I'll wait there, buddy. I placed one one day up here.
Yeah, that's why I'm, that's the reason I said that.
I come in a money, I take off home, you know, none of that. Pay bills.
You'll work, you'll work tomorrow, won't you?
If you had my phone, get it, you get it.
Yeah.
I'll work seven days a week.
All right, uh, anything else for the workers tonight? Thank you for reminding us that we left that one hanging a while ago and bringing it back up, so we'll do that. And you will have us some calls. Now, how do we, how do we, what are we gonna do with these? So we're gonna come back with, uh, ranking them, one, two, three, four, five, as we see them, do an average, we're gonna come back and discuss, discuss where on those say...
I'm glad you won't have it, but I think the way we, you had it did before, if we did it before, I think that's a good way. And, uh, I, I like that way.
We'll print out a score sheet, uh, next week and get it to y'all. Uh, Carter, the meeting, the ones that I have emailed, Billy and Mr. Wasson, they'll come by here and get there and we'll, we'll show you.
Just text me name stuff on my way home.
Or I can email it to you.
Okay.
Whatever you want. Can you print that home?
Okay, explain that a little bit, you know, we put them in a percentage, right?
A score, yeah.
Score.
On each of the questions, whether or what the question were, uh, we'll fix you a chart of what the questions that everybody asked. Ms. Roger, if you'll leave yours here, we'll bring them into Roger also.
No question, what question?
And then we'll compile those and y'all rank them to what you, uh, think they should be.
Just say one to five or one to ten? One to five, that's five of them?
Yeah, five, one to five, yeah.
Yeah, okay, one could have a one to three, one they did good, two that's kind of neutral, three they didn't do so good or build a way around. Or one, three, five.
One, two, three's good, ma'am.
Ma'am?
One, two, three is good.
One, two, three's good.
Okay. Yeah. So, so what she's going to do is take, uh, her written questions and my written questions, put them all together on one sheet, put each applicant's name, put that question and then each applicant's name by those questions and we'll rank them that way. And when do, we, we bring them back to you to score or, uh, and present to us, or will we do that when we get here?
We can, you can, either way, y'all want it in there, I can score them or from the bottom.
It's still when we get here. Still when we get here, might get out.
Yeah.
Get everybody's pen.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else from anyone? We stand adjourned tonight and meet our regular meeting Tuesday.